The first item on the agenda is a joint workshop of the school committee regarding budget guidance. Since we have members of the school committee here, we'll go around the room to introduce ourselves. Madam Superintendent, if you could start.
Sue Dora, Superintendent.
Pamela Albert, at-large and Chair.
Belinda Gary, Auburn City Councilor at Large.
Rick Whiting, Ward 1 City Councilor.
Tim Cowan, Ward 2 City Councilor.
Jeff Hyman, Mayor.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Lee Wright Walker, Ward 5 Counselor.
Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Dennis Dote, Assistant City Manager.
Pat Gardiner, School Committee, Ward 3.
Pam Hart, School Committee Member, Ward 2.
Corinne McWigan, School Committee Member, Ward 1.
Jay Rich, School Committee at Large.
Dan Poison, Ward 5, School Committee.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, School Board Committee Members. Appreciate you being here. The Superintendent and I met a couple of times now, working to discuss the FY26 budget. We worked through just an outlook for you of what we're anticipating. So what we're looking for tonight is just a conversation. Sue and I will chime in, will share where we're seeing some of the risks that we are identifying, as far as some costs, some revenue, what we're seeing on the horizon. And then, really, this is a good opportunity. For those who are new, this is, usually, this is December, January, when we hold this meeting, and it's a good opportunity for the two boards to come together, talk about what your goal is for the upcoming budget year. We'll do our best. You know, the school committees already started their budget discussions for city side. We've still got a little bit of time. We'll kick off probably in March. And so, we have a little bit of time as we move through, getting the numbers a little more refined for you. But I think the, just to talk about what our shared management goal is, and Sue just kicked me when, or throws something at me, rather, when you want me to stop. Our shared management goal that we've discussed for the city and the school side is to just provide a baseline budget for you, no expanded services, and hold the line the best we can. We know we have driving costs, we know that we have some issues that we're going to be seeing in this budget year, but our goal is to, the best we can, try to hold that line. We know this is going to be a difficult year. There's a lot of unknowns, either at a national level or state level. The Mayor and I were both on a conference call earlier today, speaking with some Senator or Representatives and other municipalities, talking just about where we're concerned with not just the national budget, but also the state budget, and what we believe might be some indicators coming our way. So that's our management goal. Sue, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I would just agree with, we talked about being fiscally responsible and adding no new programs or services this year.
So where we see, we broke out high risk, medium risk, and low risk on what we're looking at for, as we build this budget. The high risk that we've identified, state revenues for education is going to be, you know, we'll do our best. We spoke about it in our conference call today, about trying to ensure that the state holds the line at 55%. Share funding for the schools. Revenue share for the municipal side is an area that we will try to do our best to work with the legislators on that. There's a lot of moving pieces when it comes to revenue share. We have revenue share 1 and revenue share 2. And we've always been very conservative when we budgeted our revenue share dollars. We increased that a bit because we were probably coming in under budget considerably every year. And so last year, we worked with the Finance Director, we worked on those numbers. Council, if you recall, we talked about that. We increased that up quite a bit, but we're still not hitting where the state is projecting the revenue share numbers. We just saw their most recent projections came out. We're still sitting very well, I feel, as a city. But that is a risk. We're not sure what will take place and where those might be impacted. And then municipal homestead and general assistance reimbursements, those are always areas that we've got to continue to watch and monitor. The next high-risk, Finance Department, I think, Sue, if you want to start that one, and then I'll add more to that.
We have a new Finance Department in the Auburn School Department. We have a new Business Manager, and we have a new payroll department as well, and folks moving into different positions. And I think the city does as well.
Yeah, so we're in the same boat. You all know Kelsey is new in her role. She did work through the budget last year, even though we had Jill Eastman still with us. But that's very, you know, these are all new things happening within that department. We have new schools working on implementing Munis, which is their new platform that the city's already on. That will be, you know, where we'll see the real benefit of that will be in FY26. That's when it'll be, they'll be fully onboard. We'll start seeing some good benefits to that. We already reviewed the audit. We know the areas that we'll be coming back to quarterly to report on. But we do see all these as risks as we move forward, because there's a lot of moving pieces with these. I think the other component on this is just some of our reporting requirements. The funding that we received is great, but it seems like every month, the federal government's changing some of the reporting requirements on these grants and what's required of us, and making sure that we're hitting those deadlines. It's taking a lot more resources than we had anticipated. The medium risk that we've identified is workforce impacts, whether that be salary benefits, retention, recruitment, bargaining agreements. So for city side, we'll be negotiating the fire contract and the police command contract. And for the school...
We're negotiating the teacher contract, and we just settled our support staff contract.
So those are, you know, for us, for fire and police command, those are good-sized contracts for us, for the city. So we'll be negotiating those leading up through your budget discussions. And so we'll bring you more highlights and updates on that as we move forward.
If I could interrupt just, what's the end of the term of these three employment contracts that are being negotiated?
It'll be June, June 30th.
For all three?
For all three.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's yours, too, right? So I thought it was June 30th. For teachers' contract? Oh, August.
August 1st.
Okay.
But in effect, we're going to have the full impact of the three negotiated agreements in the upcoming budget?
That's right.
That's correct.
We're seeing pro-inflationary factors, we're certainly seeing impacts on utilities. You know, what's uncertain is what will tariff impacts be on our future purchasing abilities? And we also are seeing just service, cost of service goods, you know, that we're seeing those increase, trying to bring in. We outsource, and I think the school does as well, a lot of additional work, especially when it comes to some of our facilities and some of the work that's being done. Finding contractors, finding people to do that has been a challenge. And so it's pushing off a lot of our projects, delays them, and once we're delaying them, then the costs are going up as we continue moving forward with those.
Phil, sorry, with that, with delays, are there risks related to any contracts funded through grants, that we might lose some of those dollars, or is that...
None that I am aware of right now, at least for the city side. I think where we have a pretty good runway for a lot of those grants, that I think we'll be able to meet our deadlines. And so, especially when it comes to ARPA, there is a requirement that by the end of 2026, that those are expended. The portions that we have on some of these projects, we're spending those dollars first. So that way, there we make sure we don't, we're not chasing that come December 26, 2026. And then where we are going to be with this legislative session, I think, is another unknown. What unfunded mandates might we see? You know, we, you know, we saw two sessions ago, when they introduced the Senior Tax Stabilization Program, very fast, implemented right away, certainly had unintended consequences, and then the program didn't continue. And so those are, you know, for the city side, that was an unfunded mandate, because we're processing now somewhere's around 1,600 applications. We didn't have the staff to be able to do that. We had to bring somebody in, pay somebody to do that. And so, so we see some of those unfunded mandates, and also...
I don't see anything on the horizon right now for the school department, but that doesn't mean something may come our way.
And then our low impacts, because we've been trying to make sure that we're anticipating some of these, and we certainly, the school did a great job in anticipating future costs for the new high school, and that's facility impacts. So we have the new high school. We have, for the city, we're bringing online 121 Mill Street. We're bringing online Powell Center, 67 Kitty Hawk, and then potentially somewhere in the end of that fiscal year, we may also be bringing on the fire station in New Auburn. So those are all, you know, some facility impacts, as far as new buildings, bringing them online, and new costs that are associated with those. I think that, those are what we had for risk assumptions. Sue, have you had anything to add on that?
I have nothing to add to that.
And then, we've already talked about revenue, some of our revenue assumptions, we've kind of hit up above, as we talked about state revenue share, state education grants, what are some of the future grants that are coming. What we're finding is, we're really assessing a lot of grants to determine if the work that we're putting into some of these grants, we're getting a return on that. And so, so there's some grants that we may have been able to turn around in a few hours, and just put a small grant together and submit it. But now, some of these grants are requiring a great deal in reporting, and when we start adding up some of our administrative costs, we're finding that there's no value return on some of these. And so, so we are monitoring those pretty closely as future grants become available. Expenses that we're seeing, that we already know that we'll be seeing some increases on, our health insurance, the paid family medical leave contribution, you know, for the city side. If, for the city, we, and I shared this before, we don't have, we have contracts that are currently in place, so that those staff members will not be contributing until their contract expires, or we reach, I think it's May of 2026. And so, so sometime throughout this next budget, we will have everyone contributing to the, we'll be contributing the half a percent, the employees will be contributing their half a percent to this family medical leave program that the state initiated. You know, on the city side, that's somewhere's around $85,000 total, as a new cost, when everyone is up on that.
We're in the same boat that you are, and that's underway as well.
Yeah. And then, market salary adjustments, employee retention, those are all things that we, we're tackled with, especially if a vacancy comes available, if somebody's looking to leave. How do we retain our staff? Those that are in the union or non-union, how do we, how do we manage that? Seems like when someone does leave, we assess that position, we see where that position was in the market. Most of the time, there is a bump on those positions, especially some of our professional level positions, just to be able to bring individuals in. And so we'll continue monitoring those. For city side, mainpers, and then the state retirement and pension systems, those are things we're constantly trying to anticipate what we'll be seeing for increases, and so we'll factor those in. County tax, we're still waiting for the final report from Anderson County on what our county tax will be, but we already know we'll be seeing a higher increase than we did last year. And so, so that's underway. School, I think?
For school, our special education costs are always, that's always a volatile account, and we are usually seeing increases of 6% or more annually on that, so it's one to watch.
Yeah. City side, what you'll see, not that we'll be adding any new positions, but we did have seven positions last budget that were only partially funded through the fiscal year. And so those positions will be coming in fully funded, if we, as we move through this, about, for retaining those. And then we have two RFPs that are out on the city side that we anticipate seeing changes. One is the solid waste recycling RFP. We'll be getting that underway here real soon. And then LATC for our transit, that RFP is out. We'll be opening those numbers come the next month. And so we're already anticipating an increase in transit, because we've been using federal transit dollars, much like the ARPA funds, but there were federal transit dollars that were helping us reduce our increases over the last four years. And so we'll be seeing that full increase this year, as those funds are no longer available. Plus, on top of that, we'll be seeing a new, a new contract for transit services. So those are our risk assumptions. Sue, I'm not sure if you had anything to add there?
No, I'm all set.
So with, with both of us with the same goal as moving forward with doing our best to hold the line, that's our goal. We will have some budget drivers, we'll bring those forward. Obviously, school's working through those now. But that's what we're anticipating on the horizon for FY26. But now, council, school committee, it's an opportunity just to have an open discussion of what, for, just so the council will know, it's helpful for the school committee to hear some of your thoughts, direction, as they start building their budget.
Questions or comments from the council or school committee? Council, please.
Thank you. I just had one question on health insurance, and I understand you don't have any numbers right now, but do we have any indicators that insurance as a budget driver might match last year, be better than last year, worse than last year? I remember last year, health insurance was a significant increase on the city side and the school side, I think almost double digits. Do we have any indicators at this point?
Yeah. We've received our numbers from the main health trust. We're, we're sitting right around 10 or 11%. I don't know.
We won't receive our numbers until April. Though it's unknown at this time, but we're budgeting about a 15% increase.
Other questions or comments? Council, please.
What's the trend on student pop? How will that impact things?
It's a great question. We were up about 65 students this year with our, on October 1st, which is, you know, when we take our student count. So I think that could result in an increase in state funds for us. We also have what I would consider a needier population. So we have more students that are qualifying for free and reduced lunch. We have more students that are multilingual learners. We have more students that are experiencing homelessness. So some of these will factor into the amount of funding that we receive from the state, hopefully to our advantage this year.
Council, please.
Second question. I know you mentioned it's somewhat of an unknown, but is, is there any thoughts or any predictions in terms of whether the state legislature will come through and continuing at 55%?
So, the short answer would be no, but I'll explain a little more. Look, I think that from multiple conversations we've had with not just the delegation here in Auburn, but people that are on the Committees of Jurisdiction and on Appropriation of Financial Affairs, I think that the sense going into this is that the legislature, as they are convening, the general idea would be to try to remain, maintain 55% in school funding. From Auburn's perspective, we've been asked a number of times, both the city manager and I, about priorities. And from a state revenue standpoint, our answer is, our first priority is maintaining 55%. You know, this isn't anything different than we told the delegation, right? 55%, maintain general revenue sharing. That includes general revenue sharing 1 and 2. And then, as we've talked about before, there's a long list of partially funded state requirements that it would be helpful if they closed the gap on. My sense of this is that if we maintain 55% school aid going forward, we should be pretty pleased with that. I think that, as the city manager said, there is significant concern at the state level about what's going to happen here over the next few months at the national level, and whether people agree or disagree with the incoming president's policy positions isn't really the point. The point really is that we have to administer municipal government and the schools, and the, is likely to be some within a range of significant impacts that we all see from federal funding. A lot of that will roll down through the state. So I think it's a reasonable assumption at this point to say that we should not be expecting any additional federal funding. We should not be expecting any additional state funding. We've been pretty clear about where we stand on general revenue sharing, but I would expect changes in Rev 2. I don't, I would be surprised if that's maintained at the same level. I think we'd be lucky if we get the same percentage on Rev 1, but understanding how that works, if state revenues are flat, it means revenue sharing is flat, right? So, and then I would not expect any relief in things like the gap in homestead, the gap in Betty, you know, in the reimbursements. I would not expect the Legislature to act on marijuana, you know, sharing marijuana licensing. There's that whole list we went over with the delegation. At this point, I would say, given the challenges the state's going to have, that's going to be something we should not plan on any increases in that. So hence, I think, the position that the superintendent and the manager have taken about a current services budget, let's see what that looks like. But I would expect through the budget process that there's very likely to be changes and expectations as we go through this, as we see what unfolds at the, at the national and state level.
Thanks. Council, Walker?
Yeah, I would like to just put out there that I believe our taxpayers are going to be looking for us to have a very tight budget, especially after the tax increases out. Most people were hit with this year and are expecting that when the new valuation of the city is finalized. So I think this year is the year that we're really going to be pushing to keep it a very small mill rate and a very small increase in, in taxes. So I'll be voting to definitely keep it down, and I'm sure that I have two or three others that will be voting in that same place. So you'll have to be very careful of whatever our increases are to get it by this council.
Other questions or comments by the council? Council, Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given what the good Councilor Walker has said, and given what our good city manager has said about how things are going to be possibly tight in the next budget, shouldn't we start today and look at our current budget and see if there's any way we can save and put aside some money so that it could be added to the next year's budget? We've got six months, about six months left, and I think there'll be ways that we could maybe save a few pennies, which add up to dollars in the long run. Because I, too, will support potentially a no-mill-rate increase, flat funding.
So we can, we can certainly look at the budget. I guess here would be my thoughts, I won't speak for the school board, but here would be my thoughts for the council, and this is the way I think you should go into this. I think we've all heard concerns about taxes and the budget. I think that as we go through at least the municipal side, if, if counselors don't like the number, you should be prepared to come into the council meetings with specific service cuts that you want to make, right? This is the challenge we had last year. You know, I think we did a good job working through the budget, but there were some discussions about it should be cut, but other than a couple counselors, very few suggestions on where that should be cut. The other thing I would say is that, keep in mind that if you, all else being equal, let's say valuation, if valuation were to stay the same, and you maintain the same mill rate, you're going to have service cuts, right? Because the prices of things are going up. Some counselors have talked about potentially wanting to decrease the, the impact on taxes. That's okay, but that basically doubles it, right? So just to give you an example, if, if you want to cut 5% off of the current property tax levy, and inflation is driving things up 5%, that's a 10% cut in services to do that. So I think everybody's cognizant of the impact that the property tax levy has. I think it's going to be a very difficult job balancing out providing services with what that tax levy is, but I think people should be prepared, as we go into this discussion, if they want reductions, to come in with very specific ideas about what city services should be scaled back or eliminated.
Council, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, 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 too, will be looking at the budget and seeking to find as small an increase as At the same time, I'm already struggling and grappling with the reality that, at least from my perspective, the Lewis and Auburn communities are the next suburb of interest for people coming out of Portland. We have an opportunity for growth, and I think as people are seeking to build businesses and all that balance, we want to make sure that you all have support, and you have my support, to do all you can. Thank you for keeping it as level, as realistic as possible, but we want to make sure that we're having, maintaining the very good reputation we have of our schools. And, and so, you know, I know you guys are going to have your hands full with that, but I think that's important as we're looking at it. And I think so in part, you know, where I can, I want to be able to be, ask for you guys to reach out to us and let us know some of the challenges that you have with the school budgets. Just like us, I think there are some, fair amount of, of the total budgets from both municipal and the schools that are things that we have very little control over. And I think it's even more so for the, for the school side. And so I, I think where we can help understand and even communicate out to our constituents that we're looking at both sides, I would like to, to look at that. Because I do think, you know, it means the, the old estate in the nation, but Lewis and Auburn are some of the youngest populations in the state, you know, so I think we have to figure that out. I think we have people, a very large number of people among, in all ages, households that are struggling financially. And so, but at the same time, we need to make sure we're not cutting out services that are so vital that it's going to have a negative long-term, you know, impact than we, than we hope to have for a short-term minimal tax increase. So just, you know, I guess, I welcome the open dialogue and continued, understanding your challenges as we're looking then at the municipal side in terms of if there can be balances. But more, just as importantly, is I'm talking to my, you know, constituents, how I can be thinking about or understanding both the school and the municipal budget, so.
Members of the, members of the school committee? Thoughts or questions?
May not be relevant, but... May not be relevant, but President Biden signed the bill to write the Social Security dispensate for a lot of teachers, fire workers, whatever, that are also on the main purs. And I don't know logistically how it works, if that's going to impact your budget or not. I would assume it wouldn't, but just think-
Yeah, no, that's a great point, actually. We had this conversation at HR today. So nothing within the signed bill that they just enacted would require existing teachers, fire, police to now start contributing. So if, if they needed to start contributing to Social Security, that'd be an impact on the city side, because then the city has to provide that Social Security match. But the law didn't change that. What the individual will be receiving is a benefit based on what they contributed into Social Security and nothing more. So, so they did not change that requirement to start paying Social Security if they're in one of those pension programs. Yeah, great question. We had it, we discussed it at HR today, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Counsel Geary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been doing a lot of thinking when you guys said that in order to do cost savings, that we'd have to possibly see what services we may have to limit or, or change. We need to do more than that. We need to hold the line on adding new employees, not so much the day-to-day, but more of the administrative, because those type of positions pull in big salary benefits and increases. So we may need to do a hiring freeze for the higher, higher, I can't pronounce tonight. In other words, if we need trench workers, like people that work at public works that have the boots on the ground running, then I can, and we need them, I understand we need to have them. But if we need administrators on top of administrators, no.
Other questions or comments from the school board or the council? Counsel Whitey.
To Counsel Collins' point about development, I noticed in the paper recently, there's over 100 units appearing for development, housing units for development on the planning board agenda for next week. And I'm wondering how the school department's doing with the study of the facilities and the matchup between population and the existing facilities, and then trying to take out the crystal ball and see how these new units will impact, you know, school population.
That's a great question. We had a facilities advisory committee this past year that met and studied just what you're talking about. And at the end of the period that they were working, they came up with some recommendations that were shared with the school committee. And one of the recommendations was to establish a standing facilities subcommittee, which we've, we are in the process of doing right now. So this committee will, will be there for the duration and can be looking forward and be consistent in terms of any of the work that happens with our facilities moving forward. Another recommendation was to look at the Auburn Middle School and reconfigure that building to include grade six. And if we, because there's actually room in the building to bring sixth grade there. And if we are able to do that, that will free up 260 seats out in the other elementary schools. And that potentially gives us an opportunity to look at consolidating and closing one or two schools. So this is all in the works right now, and we're, we're putting together our standing facilities subcommittee, and we're, we're excited to get started on this.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, thank you all for coming tonight. I think we're going to have a lot of hard work ahead of us over, over the next few months, and I'm sure we'll be having more, more conversations as we go along. But thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight.
So the next item is an executive session pursuant to one MRSA Section 405 Sub 6C to discuss an economic development matter regarding 143 Hampshire Street and 1 and 5 Gammon Street. Is there a motion?
Motion to move forward.
Moved by Counsel Walker, who's our second.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Whitey. The vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor, opposed? Five having voted in the affirmative and two absent, the council will be in executive session.
The January sixth, two thousand and twenty five Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Councilor Gary.
Good evening, I'm Belinda Gary, I'm a city councilor at large.
Good evening, Rick Whiting, Ward one city councilor.
Good evening, Tim Cowan, Ward two city councilor.
Good evening, Jeff Harmon, mayor.
Good evening, Leroy Walker, City Council, Ward five.
Good evening, Adam Platt, City Council at large.
Good evening, I'm Anaya Aggie, student representative.
Good evening, Mbarga Dili, student representative.
Phil Crowell, city manager.
Great, thank you very much. The first order of business tonight is the consent items. There is three items on the consent agenda. The first is appointing Patricia Madora and Councilor Weisner, reappointments to serve on the nine-one-one committee, appointing Stanley Harmon for an unexpired term on the age-friendly committee, and setting seven a.m. as the time for all polls to open for elections in Auburn in two thousand and twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilor Walker, or seconded by Councilor Cowan. What will be by show of hands, all those in favor?
The January 6, 2025 Auburn City Council meeting will be called to order. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Councilor Gary.
Good evening. I'm Belinda Gary. I'm a city councillor at large.
Good evening. Rick Whiting, Ward 1 City Councillor.
Good evening. Tim Cowan, Ward 2 City Councillor.
Good evening. Jeff Harmon, Mayor.
Good evening. Leroy Walker, City Council, Ward 5.
Good evening. Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Good evening. I'm Anaya Aggie, Student Representative.
Good evening. Mubarak Dali, Student Representative.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
Great. Thank you very much. The first order of business tonight is the consent items. There is three items on the consent agenda. The first is appointing Patricia Madour and Councillor Weisner, reappointments to serve on the 911 Committee, appointing Stanley Harmon for an unexpired term on the Age Friendly Committee, and setting 7:00 AM as the time for all polls to open for elections in Auburn in 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councillor Walker, or seconded by Councillor Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in the affirmative and two absent, the motion is adopted. The next item of business is approval of the minutes. The first is for the December 16, 2024 regular city council meeting. Are there errors or corrections? See none. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councillor Walker, or is there a seconded by Councillor Cowan. Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Five having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative and two absent, the motion is approved.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and add an emergency agenda item to our tonight's council agenda, dealing with possible action, dealing with our day, the subject will be dealing or discussing our day warming places due to the extreme cold and weather conditions.
So, Councillor Gary has made a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Walker. Is there any discussion? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Five having voted in affirmative and none in the negative and two absent, the motion is approved and we will take that up under new business. If you have that written down, Councillor Gary, it would be helpful for the clerk and I to have a copy of that. Back to the minutes. For the December 19, 2024 special council meeting, are there errors or corrections? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councillor Walker, seconded by Councillor Platt. Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? So, four having voted in the affirmative, one, two, none negative, two absent, and one abstention, the motion is adopted. Next item of business is communications, presentations, and recognition. So, the first item tonight is a proclamation, a call against sex trafficking. We have, fortunate to have a number of members of a variety of groups here in support of the proclamation tonight that I would like to recognize. Tricia Grant is here. She's the Executive Director and Survivor Leader for Just Love Worldwide, who will be accepting the proclamation. Jamie Ricker, Sex Trafficking and Exploitation Victim Advocate from the Sexual Assault Prevention and Response Services. Meg Hatch, the Executive Director of Sexual Assault Prevention and Response Services, and the Children's Advocacy Center of Anderson, Gog, and Franklin in Oxford Counties, and Kara Barney, the Legal Advocacy Program Manager for Safe Voices. Appreciate all of you being here. And there's a number of folks I see in the audience as well. Please feel free to come up. So, the proclamation, whereas sex trafficking can happen to anyone, anywhere, imposes a grave threat to safety and dignity of individuals across our community. And whereas the 131st Maine Legislature took the historic step of enacting LD 1435 and LD 1436, which provides survivors of sex trafficking with a means to seal records resulting from their exploitation and to target the root issue of the sex trade, sex buying. And whereas Maine stands as the first state in our nation to pass such groundbreaking legislation, positioning us at the forefront of the fight against sex trafficking. And whereas a past study identified at least 300 to 400 trafficking cases in Maine annually, with a true number of cases presumed to be greater. And whereas early intervention in the form of education and awareness for our youth in our community is imperative in preventing sex trafficking. And whereas 92% of sex traffic survivors report being physically assaulted, with 42% saying they have attempted suicide and 90% wanting to escape the sex trade but feel they can't. And whereas trafficking can occur in person and online, and people from all demographics are at risk. And whereas community involvement is necessary to combat and ultimately end human trafficking, the City of Auburn is committed to ensuring that no survivor or family affected by trafficking is left without the services they need to heal and progress. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey Harmon, Mayor of the City of Auburn, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim my support for the efforts to combat sex trafficking and to raise awareness and engagement on this critical issue. The Auburn City Council and I recognize the importance of supportive legislation, community involvement, and survivor advocacy in working toward a future free of exploitation and trafficking. So, if you would like to come up, it'd be great if you could come up and receive the, a copy of the proclamation. Come on up, folks. We'll have the city council stand and get a picture with everyone. Thank you very much. Turn around here and we'll get a picture with everyone. Thank you very much. We appreciate that all of the work that you do and that your organizations do to help those that were victims. Our next item of business is an update on the reevaluation process and statistics from the Assessing Office. And Ms. Scammon? Yep, is he here?
Our guests are definitely welcome to leave if you'd like. Don't worry. So.
You don't want to stay for this exciting presentation? And Joe St. Peter is here as well with, he's the Deputy Assessor with the Assessor of Scammon, so.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Harmon, members of the council, Mr. Manager. You've already introduced us, so you know who we are. I'm going to start off by just giving you a rundown of what's been happening with the revaluations thus far. And then Joe is going to go over the statistics booklet that you were provided a month or so ago, just hit the highlights on it. So, we executed the contract with KRT appraisal September 13. And since then, in October, we, the Assessing Department, had a meeting with KRT, a couple of representatives, Rob Tozier and Ken Rogers. And we were discussing how we were going to do the data collection and the number of people we were going to have in the field doing the data collection, how long we thought it would take, just general items as our first meeting. So, we didn't really get into the weeds or anything. And then November 13, Rob Tozier and Ken Rogers actually came here and they had a presentation. Ken did it. No, I'm sorry. Not Ken Rogers. It was Kevin Lean. Thank you. He did a presentation for the public here in council chambers and went over the whole revaluation process and what it would entail and answered questions. We had a smaller turnout, but it was a very good turnout. They had lots and lots of questions. And we were very pleased with the presentation on November 13. And then November and December Patriot was provided, the CAMA system access to it was provided to Ken Rogers and the KRT team. There's a lot of things that go on in the background before you can even start inspections. So, they have now been going through our tables, cost tables, land tables, looking at our building descriptions and our land codes, trying to get familiar with what we use. Because even though they are very familiar with the Patriot CAMA system, different municipalities have different land use codes within the system because you set up your own system, municipality by municipality. So, they are working these past couple of months on getting familiar with our particular system. And then this coming Wednesday, we have Ken Rogers coming to Auburn to meet with the Assessing Department. And we're going to go over all of those land use codes and everything that they have been working on so that we're all on the same page. We are going to discuss what the data collection paperwork is going to look like so that if we're in the field or they're in the field, we are all looking at the same things, we're getting the correct information that we need. So, we'll go over all of that. And we want to discuss exactly where in the city the inspections are going to begin, how we're going to set it up, whether it's going to be in grids or neighborhoods, or exactly how that's going to look, how we're going to track it. We intend to have an interactive map that Joe has actually been working on and it's pretty much ready to go now.
I hope so.
Yeah. Okay. So, when it's a go, we'll have that all set up and ready to go. But we want to discuss that with KRT as well. So, we're going to talk about all of that. And then we're going to set a solid date for when those inspections will begin. And whatever we know that comes out of that meeting, the public will know, you will know, because we'll have it posted on our website. And we should have a definitive timeline for when different phases of the revale are going to happen and what are going to hap, what is going to happen during those phases. So, Wednesday is going to be a big meeting and it's really going to get the ball rolling for these inspections and we'll get going with that. And then we still have our completion date set for August of 2027. Then that's all I have for the revale right now. So, Joe can take over and go through the statistics booklet.
Okay. Thank you. It occurs to me Karen's talking about the future and I get to talk a little bit about the past, specifically about our 2024 commitment data. Each year, we prepare a booklet for the council and for general information. It's a really handy thing to have. I keep it on my desk because we get a lot of calls and a lot of requests for the information. So, in the interest of sharing, we want to make sure that people know what's in the booklet and, you know, that it's available to the public and to the council. Again, we distributed these about a month ago. There are three primary sections. Section 1 is the resolve from the City Council and the Assessor Certification of Assessment, which includes our, basically our expenditures and our assessed value and basically credits, if you will. I'm going to speak primarily about Section 2, which is a summary of our evaluation statistics. And just a little bit about us. We are the Assessing Division. It's Karen Scammon, myself, Joe St. Peter, and Ozzy Machadi is our appraiser. Yeah, it's a difficult thing to attain and she did it. So, we're very pleased for her. Our commitment date was July 15, 2024 this year, a little earlier than we normally do it, but we typically shoot for July. The assessment date, properties valued in the state of Maine as of April 1, where our declared ratio was 93%, a mil rate was 22.25, and the homestead exemption was held steady at 23,250. A little bit about our real estate. We have 9,472 parcels. That's a net increase of 11 compared to last year. Our total real estate valuation was 2.8 billion. If you take away 511 million in property exemptions, we're left with a taxable value of 2.3 billion. Those exemptions account for about 18% of our real estate totals. We also assess personal property in the City of Auburn. Those are typically assets that are owned by businesses. And we have 1,058 accounts. We're going to be starting our personal property season really soon, which includes outreach to businesses, making sure we have an accurate inventory. We have a total assessed value of personal property assets of 356 million. Of those, 246 million is exempt. We also have started providing exemptions to solar assets under a law in Maine, and we have $2.7 million. The taxable value, it looks pretty small compared to the total assessed because of Betty, the taxable value was 107 million. And that's ticking downward because of one, ratioing, but also depreciation of these assets. Our tax-based mix includes residential, commercial, industrial, and various other categories. By far, the residential properties have the biggest share. Commercial and multifamilies are close second. We have, we keep a accounting of our top 10 taxpayers. This list doesn't change very much, although we go on down the line. The total value is determined by the taxable value of the real estate and the personal property combined. Tambrands is, of course, at the top, and then on down the line. Again, there isn't much movement on the list, although some come up and down as we go, year to year. This is a listing of all of our exempt property in the city. Homestead, you'll note, is a pretty big exemption, as is Betty. The good thing about these two exemptions is that we do get some reimbursement from the state for those. Very few others afford any reimbursement. And here is our valuation-based trend since 2019. It has increased. Conversely, the mil rate trend in the city has either held flat or has decreased. And lastly, Section 3 in the book is the MVR. This is really a fine-tuned collection of data that we report to the state. They use it to determine if we are declaring the proper ratio, if we're meeting other state standards, and as the basis for certain reimbursement. So, it's really important that we get those numbers right and we report it correctly to the state. It takes us several weeks to put this MVR together and it has to match with all our other primary documents. And that, in a nutshell, is what you will find in the booklet that we hand out. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. Questions or comments from the council? Council Platte?
Thank you. I had one question. I think I read in the Sun Journal yesterday about what Lewiston's going through and some changes they had to make to the way that they were going to gather information and assess properties. I was just curious if you guys had had a similar conversation in Auburn, you know, kind of what-if scenarios? What if there's not enough folks letting assessors into their homes? I feel like we live in a climate these days where a lot of homeowners are, have trepidation of letting an assessor into their house. I was just curious if we had discussed that in Auburn and what our plans were to address that possible issue.
We have absolutely talked about it several times. Obviously, we are in great hopes that people will let the inspectors into their homes. If not, there are alternative methods. And if we absolutely must choose to do it by sending out surveys and depending on what we have on our record cards at this point in time, then take the surveys, compare them, make the updates, then that's the way we're going to have to do it. Again, it's definitely not the best scenario, but you're right, the times that we're in, we may have to. So, we have had that conversation, yes.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council Whiting?
Is the business equipment tax reimbursement, is that a reliable source of revenue from the state?
Very reliable. I mean.
Well, I just, I wasn't sure how I could, saw a deduction. It was like 3 million bucks. And then the total valuation was like 240 something. So, it was about 1 million for every 80 million in value. And I just, I didn't know how it worked, except that we got money for it.
We do. Yeah. So, it's about 246 million of Betty assets that are assessed and we get a reimbursement. And I believe the reimbursement was steadily increasing, but then it plateaued, I want to say 71%, but I'm not sure if I have that right.
You are right. The reimbursement was over 3 million. It's listed in the booklet.
Any other questions, Mr. Manager?
Thank you. Thanks, staff. Appreciate that. Just so folks know too, Revale Auburn is a hub on our website. So, if you go to the auburnmayor.gov, you can go to Revale Auburn. Once you're there, you'll actually see a lot more information about Revale. There's photos of our staff as well as photos of the entire KRT staff. KR.
KRT.
T. All there. All their photos are on there, so you have good access. Plus, I think the podcast is on there, as well as any future upcoming meetings. So if the public would like to track this further, that's a good site to go to to see information.
And Phil, we do expect to fine tune that very soon.
Okay, other comments or questions from the council? No, thank you very much, we appreciate the update. We'll now move on to the first open session of the evening. Any member of the public that would like to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. It's open session. If you'd like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda, you can approach the podium, just provide your name and address.
All right. My name is Paul Bernard, and currently I live in Turner. Been there 25 years, 25 years in Auburn and 23 years in Lewiston. I'm now 50 years old. Now, I'm here because, just recently, a lot of you guys know me because of being involved in the communities for so many years. The article that was posted on Facebook by the city of Auburn, "There is some very cold weather headed our way. Auburn in response, the city is activating a warming center starting tomorrow, Sunday, January 5th." As you know, there was a day when we all purchased the Sun Journal, and when we read the Sun Journal, we would look at the headlines. And if the headline caught our attention, we would read the article. If the headline had a picture, we really might read the article. But if there wasn't a picture or the article didn't catch our attention, we went on. So this is what just happened with this article, because it says it was starting Sunday, January 5th. It says Norway Savings Bank is going to be one of the locations, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. Okay, so the people that read this didn't scroll down. The Auburn Library was only going to be open today and tomorrow. So yesterday, my wife and I have been serving the homeless now for, we're going on three years, and we're out there every day. And we went there, and there was a lot of homeless people there, and the building was locked up. So they said, "Where can we go? Where can we go?" I didn't have any answers for them. They said, "The arena's too far." So I said, "Well, let me go check." So I went to the arena, and I talked to everybody on the first floor. I talked to everyone that worked into the building. No one was aware of the article that worked at the arena, nobody. And then finally, some gentleman came up and asked me. And anyways, I had talked to several people, and I said, "Where would they go if they came here?" Well, they would go to the room upstairs. I went to the room upstairs, there was two activities going on on both sides. The upstairs was filled, there must have been 50 to 60 people, husbands and wives and children of middle-class working families. Okay, so I'm standing there, and I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, "This is not an appropriate place for the homeless to come. This is not going to be conducive for them coming in here." So I had mentioned, I said, "Do you know, we're serving 340 homeless individuals in Lewiston, Auburn." And I said, "What if 200 homeless people came in here? What if we bust them here? And what would that mean?" And then I get a call last night from someone, and they said, "We received a call that you threatened the people at the arena." And I said, "Excuse me?" They said, "Yeah, you said that you were going to bring 200 people to the arena." I'd never said that. I said, "What if 200 homeless people would come to the arena?" And so I said, "But that raises a question to me, because it's not an appropriate place for the homeless to go, and neither is the Auburn Library." There are certain places that, you know, the police station is a police station, the fire department is the fire department, the mall, you go shopping, the grocery store, you buy groceries. The library is not a place for a warming center for the homeless people that are out here in Lewiston, Auburn. It's a different world. They have their world, we have our world. It's totally, it's totally different. We have people that have mental disabilities, we have drug addicts, we have alcohol, and they burst out. When I went into the Auburn Library today, as I was talking to the lady at the counter, one of the men, Brian, a homeless guy, he's coming down the stairs, and I could hear him yelling and cursing about the library, and he stormed out of the building. That was one individual. Can you imagine? We bring 25, 50 in there? So when the man said he was threatened by 200 homeless people going to the arena, my question is, is 100, is 100 homeless people a threat? Is 50? 25? 10? 5? 1? What if we brought one homeless woman in there, Heather, who screams all the time? Would that be a threat? So there are some facilities in Auburn, Pettingill Park, their buildings down there, the senior citizen building is not even being used. That would have been an excellent location to say, "We have a shelter." Is my time up? Okay, you're looking at me? My time's up?
Yeah, if you could wrap it up.
Okay, so anyways, before the city does something like this, you should really, you know, talk to someone that is out there, working with these people, so that we can be involved in the discussion and tell you what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, what's conducive, what isn't. You know, we work with these people, we know how they are, we know who they are. You know, most of them think we're their parents. They address us as mother and father, you know, because they trust us because we're there every day for them. And so, you know, don't post something. Neither of these facilities were aware, and neither do they want homeless people there. There are a few that go to the Auburn Library that go there all the time, been going there all year, you know, but they're very quiet. They're not the trouble ones. We need to be involved so that you can make better decisions. You can't make a good decision if you only have a piece of the pie or half of the pie. You need to have all the pieces so you can make a better intelligent decision on making a decision on where does this group of people go? Where is it a safe place for them to go so that they can come out of this frigid, arid, cold weather? We just had one, two days ago, Bill, who, he signs next to where Catman is at that intersection. Okay, he never did drugs. One of the ladies introduced him to drugs. They found him dead this weekend at Bonnie Park. How many more? How many more? Something has to be done that's different.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Yes, my name is Rochelle Bernard. I am Paul's wife, and we have been working with the homeless almost three years now. And I just want to address too that these are not just people that we just kind of brush underneath the rug. These are sons and daughters to somebody, their brothers and sisters to somebody, their mothers and fathers and some grandparents out there. And these people, for some reason, for some people, yes, they have their issues with the drugs or the alcohol, but not everybody. A lot of them are also out there in the homeless because they can't afford what they're paying for their rent. They might have lost someone who lost their income. Now it's only a one person paying for their income, and they can't afford it. They're on the street. And then those who are on the street, and they're trying to get the caseworker to be able to get a place, they get a voucher, and you say, "Where?" They don't know. They got to find a place. And some that we know have needed surgery can't have surgery till they get a place. And it's been months and months, and they keep getting told, "We don't have a place, we'll keep trying, we'll keep trying." Nothing, nothing's happening. There's no place for them to go to. But with this warming center, the thing that's hard is we've come, like Paul said, we're like a mom and dad to these people, and they're sons and daughters to us. And when we see them come out in the cold, knowing that they've heard that this place is open for them and the door is closed, or you go to this place and there's all kinds of the public, and it's like, you know what? You know, they don't feel welcomed if they're in a place that's going to be public because the thing is, is like Paul was saying, you've got some people with mental issues. You've got all kinds of issues that are very difficult to deal with in the public. But try to think, if it is your son, your daughter, a relative of yours, would you do things differently? It is bitter cold out there. And if they need a place that they can go and be able to lay down and sleep if they need to, because they're on the go all the time, and they're waiting till 8 o'clock at night to go to the warming center for those who can sleep there and stay and eat. We bring fruit out during the day, during the weekday, every day, so that we can help those who are not going out there. But still, they have all day, because it closes, it starts at 8 and ends at 8. So they're done at 8 o'clock in the morning, they've got all the next day till 8 o'clock at night again. That's a long time, especially out in the cold, and no place to go, because the library usually closes at 1 o'clock or whatever in Lewiston. And places that they're used to go to, it's just closed, there's no place. They need to be able to, those who have a phone can charge it, or just be able to go into a warm place just out of the cold for a while, but a place that they can also lay down, let them be able to lay down and sleep, rest. And we're willing to be able to help. If there's a place open, we had made extra sandwiches and stuff so we can bring and give them something there to help them. We usually get the food donated from Rusty Lantern every single day. Two stores donate every single day, and we have picked that food up and we bring it to the park every day, both Kennedy and Bonnie Park. And we have fed so many. I have pictures of over 350 people, because I ask them, "Let me take your picture, I'm not going to exploit you, I respect you. I'm going to give you a copy, we're going to keep a copy because we're going to put your name on it, and we're going to pray for you every single day." And it helps us remember to call them by their name, because they matter. They are somebody's son and daughter, a brother, a sister, or a mother, a father, an aunt, an uncle. We even had a pastor one time tell us, "I've been watching you." "What do you mean, you've been watching us? We're out in the street," and he says, "I've been watching you, I've been following you, I see when you go out there." And he said, "I've got a son, he's in line, and he's the third one getting ready to come up to you. And I see how your wife goes up there, and you guys hug them. And then your wife takes a picture, and she gives the picture to them. But my son, I can only see him because he's in line, so I come here to be able to see my son." Everybody's got their different issues, everyone's got a story. But we need to be able to put flesh on that and realize that could be one of our family members. I just want you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
Evan Seer, 122 Granite Street. Although I will admit that animals did not come up after hearing this. Seems a bit trivial, considering what they're talking about. But I guess I came up because I think it fits. It's a question about lines of communication. So you guys know, last time I came up, I talked about the Appointment Committee policy and so on and so forth, and what you can and cannot do, and it was back and forth. I guess I looked, and I've been paying attention specifically to Planning Board. You guys know I was involved in that for a long time, so that's near and dear to my heart. And I was looking, and I was seeing that there was a position posted, and it was open until February 3rd. Although it would have started when the council had their last meeting, there would have been a 14-day based on the policy. And the policy is very clear, "There shall be a 14-day posting." And then I saw that the city posted it would be January 13th or something like this. And the only reason I came up after that is to say, there's confusion around this. So if there's a clear policy around something that says you shall do something, I understand. I've been on the other side of the dais, I understand. There are times when you need to govern and you need to do things a little differently to incorporate other people, to make sure everyone is involved. Well, like, what are the rules? Like, what is being used to manipulate the policy to say that you can change a timeline? And I ask only because it becomes confusing. As a member of the public, you see February 3rd, now you see January 13th. The policy says it should have been 14 days. It would have been 14 days after the council chose not to appoint someone. And it becomes very confusing. As I said, I wasn't going to come up after hearing these people talk before me. I realized this is really a bigger issue. If someone can't understand how they get involved in the government, when they can apply, how to apply, what the rules, basic rules are to apply, the policy is written in plain English. Je peux comprendre ça, okay? Like, I can read that, okay? But then to also hear people say that there's an announcement that these people should have a safe place. They show up, they don't even know they're allowed. To me, it speaks to a bigger problem, okay? It says there's a problem with communication, and that's okay, but I understand we all make mistakes. But this was supposed to be the council of public meetings and the public voice and the everything. And I guess I'm just asking, like, what has happened here? What has happened that you can't even read a policy and see this is when this is going to happen? You can't read an article in the paper put out by the city administration and say, "The homeless are allowed here." What has fallen apart? There is something wrong. And again, I was not going to speak, but...
Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. So to clarify one item from public discussion about this Planning Board posting. So the policy requires that the clerks will post on the city website a notice of vacancy for 14 days. For the last 10 years, that has been understood to be a minimum posting requirement. And many, many times, for a variety of reasons, the postings have been more than 14 days. And in this particular instance, there was a discussion between the city manager and I since the posting would have fallen, if I recollection is correct, like on the 6th of January, to extend that to January 13th, because this posting period was going over the holidays. There was some confusion, we apologize for that. It was originally posted for the 13th, it got changed to February. And the confusion was that there was discussion by the clerk with the Appointment Committee, and the Appointment Committee was unable to meet the week of the 13th. And the discussion was that that would put this on the council agenda for the first meeting in February and not the January 21st meeting. There was some miscommunication, and inadvertently got posted that it closed on February 3rd. One of the applicants noticed it, members of the staff noticed it, and that was corrected. So to be clear, the current vacancies are open until January 13th. They will close at midnight, I guess, that night. It's not the close of business anymore, because you can apply online. And the Appointment Committee will meet then to discuss those applications, and the matter of the nomination will be in front of the council, the first meeting in February, which is the 3rd, is that correct? Yeah, thank you, it's February 3rd. So just to clarify what happened and how that came about. We'll now move on to unfinished business. The first item is ordinance 2312022024, text amendments related to 30A MRSA subsections 4364, 4364A, and 4364B. To remind the public and the members of the council, these are the items forwarded to the council by the Planning Board that the Planning Board and staff worked on for 14 months to bring the Auburn Chapter 60 zoning ordinance into compliance with the statutory requirements that were in LD 2003. So this is scheduled for second reading and a public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Council Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Whiting. The public hearing will now be open. Any member of the public that would like to address the council on this matter, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Happy holidays. And I don't want this to be a continuation of Festivus, one of the greatest holidays out there. But I do want to speak on this. I was told at the last meeting, and just recently actually, a couple of seconds ago, that this passing of this ordinance is mandatory in order to be in LD 2003 compliance. Having been very much a part of LD 2003 formation, working with the then Speaker and current Speaker in the Governor's Office on this, that didn't sit well. So I asked DECD. DECD up in Augusta has two people that are responsible for LD 2003 compliance. They confirmed that, yes, some of the things in this ordinance, I sent them the ordinance, the redline version that's in the packet, are required. I.e., parking requirements being waived for affordable housing absolutely needs to be in there. Same thing with density bonuses too, in your growth areas at 2.5. Absolutely needs to be in there. And those should be in there. Because I do know that the city is applying for a grant to help offset some of the, some of the money being spent to update all of our ordinances. And that's worthy. You should absolutely get that. But there are three key things in this ordinance that are riders. They were slipped in. They do not need to be there. If they were removed tonight through a motion to amend, this ordinance will be approved. The grant will be given, as far as I know. That's ultimately DECD's decision. The grant will be given and money will be received by the city of Auburn. I wish staff was here. Maybe they are. I just don't see them or know where they are right now. But I'd like to ask you, or someone here, to ask a simple yes/no question. Ask them if a cap on ADU size is required under LD 2003. Ask them if LD 2003 requires that you cap multi-unit buildings at two. Ask them if it's required that you double the lot size in order to build an ADU in certain areas in which this ordinance talks about in great detail. If they're here, please ask them after public session's over. When you ask them that, you'll know the answer. Don't take it from me, okay? And don't take it from people who have said that this is absolutely required in order to be compliant, because it is not. And a clear conscience, and I hope you councillors have that, that you go forward, you're voting for something that you know is part of being compliant with LD 2003, but also has three other issues in there. Three other sections that are not required at all. Regulatory consistency doesn't just start with passing of ordinances. It starts here, in these public meetings. And it starts with truthfulness. You have to be truthful to each other and to the public. And hopefully, tonight, someone makes a motion to amend and remove those three sections from this ordinance so we can prove to everybody throughout the state and New England that Auburn is still open for business. That we are not going to go ahead and change ordinances because we want to. It's not a requirement because we want to. And retroactive them back to January 1. Regulatory consistency is where capital goes. And I said it last meeting. I'll say it again. We need capital here. We need more taxable value. Whether it be residential or corporate, we need more. So please, I hope those motions to amend do happen. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Any other member of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
Evan Seer, 122 Granite Street. So the last time I was in council chambers, I did ask a question about what the process is for assuring that an ordinance change complies with the comprehensive plan. And I asked because state statute is quite clear that your current ordinance doesn't need to comply with the comprehensive plan. But if you change an ordinance, it does need to comply with the comprehensive plan that's in effect. And I know that we're talking about looking at a new comprehensive plan, but we have a comprehensive plan that's in effect right now. I asked the question. I understand that you don't get a response during public comment. A response was given after. And the response was that legal has looked through the ordinance to make sure that it complies with the rest of ordinance and that it went through a planning board process. So I kind of feel like my question wasn't really answered. Like, did legal actually look at making sure that this complies with the comprehensive plan? And I'll reiterate, and I said it last time. My concern is that the comprehensive plan with regard to the growth zone sets some very clear goals. And case law is like, is pretty clear on this. That if you amend your ordinance and maybe it doesn't meet the exact specific language in the comprehensive plan, as long as it meets the tone and the purpose of the comprehensive plan, you're in compliance, right? So there's some wiggle room there, and I understand this from the planning board side, that there can be a lot of wiggle room there. My concern being that we're talking specifically about the growth zone. And in our current comprehensive plan, the growth zone outlines specific goals. Those goals being to increase density where there's water and soil available. The goals include increasing ability for individual homeowners to increase diversification of housing types. It encourages diversification, diversification of housing types in general, particularly where there are already multifamily housing in place, which is often the case throughout many of our urban residential zones that currently exist. Because most of those zones existed long before the urban residential zones. And if you go through those zones, I can tell you, I grew up in New Auburn and people talk about, I grew up on the hill and people talk about it like that's a single-family home neighborhood. And I can tell you, it was not single-family homes. I grew up there. There was duplexes, triplexes, and apartment buildings. Same thing occurs where I live now. I live up at the top of Court Street. Court Street's no longer a part of the discussion because that's form-based code and that's not part of what you guys are looking at. But it's important to recognize that the comp plan does spell out in suburban zones identified in the comprehensive plan. It is important to recognize that when you look at the comprehensive plan, you're not looking at, when you look at the future land use, you're not looking at the current zoning designations. You're looking at proposed zoning designations. So the zoning designation in the future land use plan doesn't actually, doesn't have to have the same name as what's on the ground now. The point is, if it overlies that zone, you should not be doing something in that area that is contrary to what is within the future zoning land use plan. And when we look at it, the majority of the land that would be incorporated in the current zoning changes fall under what would be a traditional downtown neighborhood district. I forget the exact, it gets very convoluted. And then there's also a suburban residential district or something. They don't match the exact zones that are there now. But that traditional downtown neighborhood zone, whatever it's called, has a, has a density of like 14 to 16 units per acre. And the suburban has something like six to eight. And the proposed zoning ordinance caps it. You've got your one house. And then you can have your ADU. And then if you're in the urban residence, you need another quarter acre, okay? To have a second. So you're talking three and a half acre. We're really, under the comprehensive plan, depending on whether that's under the traditional downtown neighborhood or the suburban, again, they don't always line up with what's on the ground. You're talking about, so now you're talking about having a density of six units per acre where really you could be looking at having up to 16 or eight. And so I guess I just have the question. I had it before and I just feel like it wasn't answered, which is why I'm back up. The last time I asked the question, the response that was given when I sat down was, "It's gone through legal review to make sure that it matches with current ordinance or whatever. It doesn't conflict. And then it went through the planning board process." But that wasn't the question I asked. My question was, what is the process to make sure that this matches with the comprehensive plan? Because I, listen, it's all written, I guess, I'm not a definitive... No one's a, no one in this room is an expert. That's why there's multiple people here, right? That's why we need multiple people to govern. But I guess when I look at it, I go, I have a question on whether or not it matches and complies. So I'm just asking a resident, what's the process to make sure it does? I didn't get the answer last time. I'm telling you why I think it doesn't. I think it's fair to ask, right? I just feel like it's fair to ask, what's the process to make sure that it does? And having listened to Mr. Levesque, I get, my question is also, well, if you have a question as to whether or not it actually complies, why, why you put yourself at a legal liability? If you can take those pieces out and still me LD 2003 and then workshop this further to understand. It's not saying you can't do it moving forward, but why not? I don't know. I guess, without that, without that question being answered, how do we make sure this complies? Why not look at this and say, maybe there's a question as to whether those pieces do comply? Specifically, the density pieces? And say, yeah, we can pass an ordinance tonight that puts us in compliance with 2003, and then we can workshop further. If you want to put further restrictions beyond what LD 2003 states, that's your prerogative. You're, you're the legislative body. You're allowed to, we've elected you to do that. But why, why, there's a question. I don't know. Why wrap that all up together, I guess? That's my, my two cents. So thanks.
Thank you. If any other member of the public would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, the public hearing will be closed. Discussion by the council?
So I'd like to clarify from the public testimony a number of things here. First, Mr. Seer raised the question about legal. So this, in this process over the last 14 months with the staff and the planning board worked on this, legal did review the ordinance prior to it coming before the council. Part of that review is making sure that the ordinance that's being proposed is not adverse to the comprehensive plan. The standard is not being in compliance with the plan. The state statute is that you cannot have an ordinance that's adverse or violates the comprehensive plan. Legal has reviewed this. And their advice was that the ordinance that's being presented to the council does not violate the comprehensive plan, among a number of other issues that they looked at. Mr. Levesque raised three points, if I have captured them correctly here, related to cap size on ADUs, maintaining multi-units in certain zoning districts at two dwellings in the unit, and the issue with the additional lot size that is needed when you're adding additional dwellings on a parcel. So I think it's important to, for people to understand the context of the task that was presented to staff and to the planning board. And that, the context was for them to review LD 2003 and identify the minimum standards that need to be changed in the ordinance for compliance. And not to be undertaking other substantive zoning discussions in the process of LD 2003. So to address these three particular issues, the issue on the cap of ADUs came about based on the construction of LD 2003 by the legislature. So those that you are familiar with this, it allows additional dwelling units on a lot. It also allows an ADU. ADUs are defined separately or placed in the statute separately from additional dwelling units. So as an example, you can afford dwelling units on a vacant lot of a certain size. The, clearly, the legislature didn't get into identifying a cap on ADUs because different municipalities define that differently. And if you recall from the conversation a couple of weeks ago, generally, that's 800 to 1,000 square feet. The planning board put forth a cap of 1,500 square feet. The 1,500 square feet to define the ADU doesn't limit second dwellings. The current ordinance in Auburn that talks about ADUs isn't necessarily the same construct of an ADU the legislature's talking about. Because in effect, it's unlimited in size and it's a second dwelling unit. LD 2003 provides that exact same benefit. The idea behind LD 2003 was, in addition to these additional dwelling units that you might have, you could also have an ADU. Given the charge that the planning board had, which was to do what's minimally required and not to be undertaking, when we had a comp plan review about to start, other substantive issues, they put forth a cap of 1,500 square feet. That only limits the ADU. That doesn't mean if you have a dwelling and you want to add a second dwelling, it's limited to 1,500 square feet. If you can fit a second dwelling, there's no limitation on the size. It could be 10,000 square feet. On the multi-units at two units, this was brought up last time. I went back and I reviewed the planning board discussions regarding this. This is not a change from the current ordinance. In the zones that the, where this ordinance came forward to us from the planning board, in the zones that limit two units in a dwelling, it doesn't limit the number of dwellings you can have. It just limits the number of dwellings in a unit. That is consistent with current ordinance in Auburn today. And again, the work of the planning board wasn't to undertake some discussion about ordinance changes beyond LD 2003 compliance. So they clarified that. And the third issue on lot size, what LD 2003 says is if you add dwelling units, you, the city cannot require a bigger lot size for subsequent dwellings. So I think the example was used of urban residential at a quarter of an acre. So the city could not say, if you're going to have a second dwelling unit on the lot, that it has to be an acre. But there's nothing in LD 2003 that says anything about allowing less acreage for each additional dwelling unit. The dwelling unit size projections in these zones are the same as current ordinance today. This does not change those. So I understand their positions. I'll say the same thing that I've said in other meetings regarding these issues. There are legitimate questions to be raised about the number of dwellings that can be allowed in a unit. There's legitimate questions to be raised about what the lot size progression should be. But we are undertaking a comprehensive plan review. And that is the place to have these discussions and not in an ordinance that comes forward to us that's trying to do the minimum changes allowed to comply with LD 2003. So other, other thoughts or questions from the council?
The council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Gary?
Yes.
Counsel Whiting?
Yes.
Counsel Cowan?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
No.
Counsel Platts?
Yes.
Before having voted in affirmative, one in the negative, and two absent, the motion is adopted. We'll now move on to new business, order 0401.
We'll move, now move on to, uh, new business, order 0401062025, re-appropriating unspent proceeds from the city's 2023 and 2024 general obligation bonds. This will be your first reading. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Uh, as you saw in the information sheet, there were, um, unobligated bonds that, as we talked with the bond counsel, um, they provided information that it would be best to come back before the council, have you re-obligate those funds, uh, prior to suspending. Uh, these were related to FY '24, uh, general obligation bonds, as well as FY '23, uh, general obligation bonds. As I had mentioned at a previous council meeting, as it pertained to North, uh, North River Road, uh, funding was going to be needed to, um, take care of that emergency on North River Road as the, um, the culvert on Stetson Road, uh, was going to be, um, unpassable for a certain weight of vehicles. And so, we needed to make that quick change on North River Road. Certainly was an area of strip that, that needed to be done. Believe ended up being close to 350,000 on that. We did use some state funds, as well as, uh, we'll be obligating these funds. The other is regarding, uh, fleet vehicle purchase. Sometimes the way we write our ordinance, uh, bonds, rather, they're very specific. Uh, so rather than to fleet, it was to, uh, specific departments. Re-obligating this allows us to, uh, shift those funds from one department to another department that had a, a greater need for a vehicle, uh, and be able to use those funds, uh, for that vehicle. Part of it has to do with a vehicle that's required for our, um, facility maintenance. Um, individual that's now housed out of the high school, but then is also managing, uh, the facilities of all the other, um, buildings within the city. Uh, so that was part of that shift, as well as, um, Public Works' need for a, a, a vehicle as well. So, those are the obligations, um, and the bond counsel will require you to have two readings on that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Manager, for the background. Is there a motion?
A move that we adopt to, uh, re-appropriate these unspent proceeds as, as, uh, presented.
Moved by Counsel Whiting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Cowan. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council? Counsel Platt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I might have just missed it, uh, Mr. Manager, but I, just some clarification on the 85,000 towards the fleet vehicle purchase. So, i- is that $85,000 in funding that would have been requested in the next budget, or?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. In the past, i- it, it, it's changed with bond counsel. In the past, if it was already obligated to a vehicle account, and it was specifically within another department request, you know, a vehicle would have still been, uh, would have met the obligation requirement. Uh, bond counsel is saying, the way that it was written, it needs to be specific. So we could not just re-appropriate those funds, uh, without coming before the council. But those, that vehicle request would certainly come back before the council and the FY '26 bond, if it's not obligated here.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel Walker?
Yeah, Mr. Manager, could you tell us what that vehicle would be exactly, or do you know at this point?
I believe there, it's, there are two pickup trucks.
The Tahos, the, the.
That's right, the Tahos. So, two Tahos is what it is. So we have vehicles that are, that would have been traded out from the PD, rather than trading them out, uh, for really what would have been a lesser value, keeping them in-house, but still transferring those funds.
Thank you.
They ended up being Tahos, thank you.
Other questions or comment from the council? Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in other words, if we support this and it passes, when we look at the capital improvement plan for next, in the next budget, we don't have to authorize as many vehicles as the police department's requesting.
These, these would be for Public Works, not for police.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I thought it was our pub, uh, police.
We're removing them from, um, from the PD and re-appropriating them, but there's a cost to that. And so, part of these are coming out of that, that requirement. So, it's, uh, it's really going towards the facility maintenance position, and, uh, the supervisors' position at PW are where those are being shifted to. But they are Tahos, not, not the pickup trucks.
So what are they using today?
Yeah. I don't, they don't have vehicles currently. Our facilities' position changed when we took over maintenance from the school department. Um, we have the, um, facility maintenance position that was, um, part of our positions, our position staffing was Derek Belanger's position, which is very different than what we're currently using that position for. That position is now housed at the high school, and now is required to go between every facility that we have within, within the city. Um, and so that's a, that's a completely, uh, they did not have a vehicle in the past.
Well then, they're not going to be used as, I don't know how to put this politely, as rough as our police department, or how rough the fire department potentially are. In other words, we may be able to retain these longer without having to trade them in so often.
Absolutely.
Next question is, I know this is a, a new conglomeration of departments and tasks and stuff. Have you seen on the bottom line, if it saved any monies, and is it worth pursuing it further?
The, the school maintenance component? Yeah, absolutely. There's, we're seeing savings as far as, um, our purchasing. We're seeing savings with what the cit, the school department was actually contracting out for services, where, um, they may have needed a, a piece of equipment that the school department did not have. When those work orders now come into the Public Works Department, we have the majority of that, that equipment. We're not sourcing that out. That's being brought into our work order system, and that work's being done by Public Works.
That, does it also cover the Public Works employees? I mean, have we had to add to the staff? And is that figured into this cost of the maintenance of school properties, or any other properties?
So we took over the school maintenance employees, uh, when we, um, brought, brought in the, uh, school maintenance requir, uh, duties. Uh, most of those were custodians. Um, however, we are able to, um, still utilize some of those resources, and then bring PW in. The impact that you're going to see, and you're not going to see any additional requests other than what you funded last year, uh, for PW, but it's just, well, how long does it take for certain projects to get completed? That's where you're going to see the impacts. The, the new facility, um, facilities manager's position, that position is, is really, uh, focused currently on, uh, some of the requirements within the new high school, uh, for the geothermal, the HVAC system. We end, we, we advertise for that position to hire someone that has that skill set, to have a good understanding of that. You will see a return on that, um, investment, uh, for that individual with what we are paying out to mechanical services and, and other needs, because we have somebody that can troubleshoot, uh, most of our HVAC systems in-house.
Other questions or comments from the council? Uh, as our minded the council, since, uh, this is, uh, agenda item relative to bonds requires five votes for passage. Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by, uh, the vote will be by roll call. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Whiting?
Yes.
Counsel Cowan?
Yes.
Counsel Walker?
Yes.
Counsel Platt?
Yes.
Counsel Gary?
Yes.
Five, having voted in the affirmative and none in the, and two, none in the negative and two absent, the motion is adopted. The next order of business is order 0501062025 regarding the transfer of 143, excuse me, 143 Hampshire Street and 1 and 5 Gammage Street. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Gary and seconded by Counsel Walker. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council. Uh, for clarity on this, uh, Mr. Manager, do you want to provide, uh, um, uh, some background, um, for the public on, uh, the fact that this is going to be a contingent transfer and, um, the, um, the lot size designation?
Yeah, absolutely, thanks. So the, the two, the three locations we're looking at are 143 Hampshire, 1 Gammage, and 5 Gammage. These are located right at the intersection of Gammage and, uh, and Hampshire Street. Uh, these parcels, two of these parcels were tax-acquired properties. Uh, the city will need to, um, go through, uh, the legal process for transferring those two par, parcels, uh, to ensure that there's no challenges with the sale of this property. Also, uh, the sale for these three properties are contingent upon, um, the Auburn Housing Authority, uh, receiving the grant funding from Main Housing to, um, to, to, uh, build this project. So, if that funding is not awarded, um, the first round of the submissions are due by March 6. If those funds are not awarded, we will not execute the sale of these three parcels. Um, as, uh, you know, just as a, I think it was a previous, uh, workshop where Counsel Gary mentioned ensuring we have access to the, um, Chestnut Street Park. Um, we will work that in, uh, to the agreement to ensure that we continue having that access, uh, to the park. Uh, we will have a, a completed, um, ADA accessible walkway that will take down, take, uh, folks down into Chestnut Street Park. And also, after the workshop, uh, if you look at the boundary lines for these properties, we did make a change on the parcel for 147 Hampshire Street. Uh, they originally was, uh, written up and presented for the full transfer of that parcel. Uh, we changed the boundary line on that, so we squared off that parcel. That kept us the, uh, land in the back that actually ties, um, to the side street that's back there that gives, again, access for, in the future, for Public Works, if they wanted to access that park, uh, from that side street, um, they could be able to access that. So, we made some modifications based on, uh, the comments and the discussion we had at the last workshop.
Any further questions or comments by the council? Counsel Platt?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, I just make one comment in, uh, in Counsel Wisner's absence. I know a question he brought up was, uh, would there be any lost revenue to the city by transferring these over? Um, and just to anyone watching, to the public, um, these are currently city-owned, so they do not generate a property tax currently.
Thank you. We did add the, uh, property values, uh, as they, as they currently sit as vacant lots, in the work sheet, in the work, um, the information sheet, rather, so that the council would have that information.
Further questions or comments by the council? Is the council ready for the question? Counsel Gary?
Very, very brief, briefly. I am in total support of, of this land going for future development of the proposed part, project for a homeless apartment house, which in the long run, it will get those, some of those that are on the street, off the street, those that really want to change their life and make a difference. From doing that, they become even more productive citizens. They get the services that they need. And it cuts down, pretty much in the long run, the monies we have to pay out for call for services to help these people when they're out on the street, whether it's, uh, medical emergencies or even police emergencies. We need to start somewhere, and this is a very big leap. And like I said, I truly support this, and I know it's going to make a difference one step at a time. I know 30 units isn't a lot, but like I said, it's one step. And if we can move 30 people off the street, then it's worth what we're doing.
Other questions or comments by the council? Counsel Whiting?
Just a quick comment that there are three of these facilities in Portland, and, um, most of the people in Portland, including the Portland Police Department, the city government, the housing authority, everybody involved with housing, uh, Mark Swan, you know, Pebble Street Housing. Uh, everybody is very happy with this type of housing. Uh, I heard a story on public radio a couple of weeks ago about the city of Denver is actively courting these type of facilities because they're seeing a reduction in their, uh, homeless population through the development of these facilities. And they have a pl, a plan, a long-term plan to actually build enough of them so that they will eliminate homelessness.
Other questions or comments by the council? Counsel Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to follow up on, on Counsel Platt's comment, it's, currently, these parcels are not, uh, generating taxes. But also to add in, I believe I'm correct, that, that this facility, there would be some tax, property tax generated, not just that it would be built and, on, and remain tax-free, so.
That's correct. Other questions or comments from the council? Just one clarification on the process for the public. In the prior meetings, we talked about the applications in response to the RFQ being due January 16th to Main Housing. Um, that date, it's been extended by Main Housing. We will be responding, uh, to their request by the new date of March 6. Is the council ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Five, having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, and two absent, the motion is adopted. Uh, the next item of business is the, um, uh, agenda item placed by Counsel Gary through the suspension of the rules. Uh, Counsel Gary, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would like my motion to be is to, to request that our city manager evaluate the situation to come up with more suitable viable places for those that need to get out of the elements due to the emergency that this cold weather and temperatures has, has come up with, with possible actions, if anything is violated or needs to be added to our ordinances, as well as if we need to approve additional funding for maybe some sort of supplies at these facilities. I mean, at least bare minimum of at least water, and maybe, it, I'm not trying to sound cheap, but some sort of substance that's not going to spoil or need staff to cook, which to me would be like assorted, like peanut butter crackers and stuff.
So, so if I might be helpful with this, to try to separate the motion from the, um, from the supportive comments by Counsel Gary, I believe the motion on the floor is to direct the city manager to evaluate the situation, the current situation, for the provision of, uh, uh, emergency warming shelters, to ascertain if, uh, additional sites are needed and make recommendations to the council. Does that cover it, Counsel Gary?
Correct, but where it's an emergency, he may, he may need to act quicker than we, when we come back again to vote things in, because it needs to cover the next three to five days, at least, minimum.
Yeah, i- is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Walker. Uh, is there any member of the public that would like to make comment to the council on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address.
I don't want to cry, but, uh, we would certainly want to be involved, and we could, besides the crackers, they need cobs. The more cobs, the more, more they're going to be. Uh, we would volunteer to, you know, bring food, water. We get water from Poland Spring. We, you wouldn't have to worry about that. We, we would take care of that if you had a location where we could feed them.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Discussion by the council. Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, I keep. Every year, I keep asking the city manager to come up with a place that people can go to, to get out of the elements. We've not had the numbers that we, unless it was a deep drastic emergency, power outages, floodings, ice storms and whatnot, that we're seeing now today. Before, we'd only have maybe 10, 15, 25 people. It was places where people could go to get out of the elements. Through the years, we've been having some sort of place. We've had citizens come here that can't afford the heating oil and keep their temperatures low and close down their rooms. We've had, through the years, two or three senior families, husband and wife, say that they've had to shut down their whole house except for their bathroom and the kitchen and slept on the kitchen floor by the stove. Given now the situation, the kind city manager tried to come up with a solution with Norway Savings and the library. But it was pointed out in open session where it wasn't quite maybe such a good idea because it seemed like those that were in charge of the facilities didn't know it. And it was very hard, like what was said, if more than, I'll say even 50 or even 100 homeless people come there when they were having so many sporting events and different things going on at the arena. So, if I had thought this more, if I didn't do this spirit of moment, I would have talked to the city manager, so I wouldn't have jumped him and the mayor tonight on this. But I believe it's a subject that we've got to deal with tonight and now, and that is why I brought it forward. And I know that we may need, I mean, Pastor Bernard kindly offered food and stuff, which he can work with probably city staff and the manager, to be able to supply the people what they need. I'm not sure if the city manager is going to need to be able to appropriate certain funds, say like maybe two to, I mean, I'm frugal on the dollar, between two and maybe 5,000 for whatever supplies that they need in order to accommodate this. And I know it's going to be more, at least I feel within, it's not going to be just this week. It could be potentially further on in January, it could be even February and March. But we need to have things in place so that everybody knows on the same page. And if we have a plan in motion, when we get to enact it, our director of communications can just pump it out there, and there won't be no miscommunications of what the message is.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel Walker?
Thank you. I was hoping that we were going to hear something about the 121 Mill Street tonight. I was there at the building again today. The big hall is still sitting there exactly the way it was two and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago. We've got chairs sitting in boxes, and not one box has been opened. We've got tables sitting in boxes, not one box has been opened. And in emergency, I think somebody could have probably got that open by asking for a few volunteers to at least keep people in a warm facility, in one big room. And I talked with, I believe it was Glenn, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, he said the state fire marshal gave them the okay, that the building was pretty much set to go. And I talked to the mayor yesterday on the phone, he said he did not get that written permit, or whatever you want to call it, on Friday until this past Friday. So, I don't know who's telling me exactly when and what happened on what date correctly, but I just think the cold spell that we just had this weekend, we could have been maybe reaching out to somebody knowing on Wednesday and Thursday that it was going to be somewhere near the temperatures that it is, that we could have been a little bit better off and a little closer to having somebody that could have just babysat these people. And maybe we would have had 10 people, maybe we would have had 50 people. But I don't believe that number would have been larger than that in Auburn, just to let them come in and let them go back out as they felt they were warmed up.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The idea of the Mill Street property would be an ideal solution because it's nearer the downtown, and if it's during the week, usually city buses are running so they can get to and from the place. And it's easier to transport people from a downtown, well, walking if they had to, to that kind of place than trying to make them walk all the way up to Norway Savings.
Other questions or comments from the council? So, I'd add a few things here. I want to follow up on the comment about people that are housed. Counsel Gary makes a good point about people that are housed but are having struggles heating their property. Low-income folks come every day, and anyone that isn't coming can come down to the general assistance office. There are funds available for heating assistance for qualifying low-income folks, and so I would encourage that. The, there was a comment about the city manager appropriating funds. So, the city manager has no authority to appropriate funds, but the city manager has authority within budget categories to expend currently appropriated funds, and it, the manager can weigh in on this. But I think what we're talking about here likely is something that, on an emergency basis, that could be accommodated within the currently appropriated funds and wouldn't require budget action. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? Depending on the extent of this.
That's correct.
I'd also comment on 121 Mill Street. So, here's the situation. Mr. Holmes has been diligently working to try to get the Fire Marshal's Office to fit into their schedule, the inspection of 121 Mill Street and the approval. That's been the biggest impediment that's caused us not to be able to open that facility in December. When I talked to Counsel Walker yesterday, my understanding was that the occupancy permit was going to be issued on Friday. It's my understanding, from having further conversations with the manager today, that two punch list items, a handrail, and a change to the fire alarm system were required before any legal occupancy can take place in that building. That work is being done, and we expect imminently that we'll get occupancy permit to use that building. Relative to Norway Savings Bank Arena and the library, look, I think everyone on this council, everyone involved in the homeless situation clearly understands those are not adequate responses to what we would like to provide for services. They have been the response for a number of years, and I think 121 Mill Street is an excellent opportunity to provide a better solution for emergency warming. And as soon as we can get that open, from discussions I've had with the manager and staff, they're diligently working to try to identify a solution to transition over to 121 Mill Street for the very reasons that Pastor Bernard has pointed out. While Norway Savings Bank is an open, warm place, it's not a great place to do this. The library is not always open. The last thing I would say is, it was unfortunate that some people didn't understand the posting and went to the library. My understanding from Counsel Walker is, when he went by the library, there were six people there. I will say that on Sunday, I spent five hours in Auburn going to homeless encampments throughout this city and did not find, clearly, you know, being intense isn't adequate, but I did not find anybody out of doors, and none of the people I came across wanted to be taken up on an offer to go to the Norway Savings Bank Arena for the very reasons that we've talked about, right? It's not a great location. So, I would be in favor of the motion, and I think this is something that the manager's already working on and will continue to work on to find a better solution. Mr. Manager, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's important to know that we have a policy that we operate under, and that policy was written in 2023. And it was as a response to providing warming or cooling locations for when your home mechanisms are not capable to provide either cooling or heat. That's written in the policy. It's very clear in the policy that the policy wasn't written, and the postings that we put out were not written for a homeless shelter or homeless to respond to the homeless needs. That was never the intent. We make it very vague when we post it that it's available. We probably have a handful of families that do go to Norway Savings Bank Arena for the reasons that Counsel Gary mentioned. They have heating issues within their home. Those are the things that we see. And so, and it certainly was not the intent to meet the needs for an alternative need for the overnight Lewiston Shelter. That's not the intent. We don't have the resources to be able to accommodate that. What the mayor shared is exactly correct. We have two items that are outstanding on 121 Mill Street. I met with Mr. Holmes today. We went over a process for us. We identified, and I think those who are working with the unhoused at the shelters would say that one of the biggest challenges is Sundays. That's the biggest needs we have. We have other centers that are opening, you know, day services on Saturday, and there's some resources there, but Sunday's really the challenge. What we spoke about today was ensuring that when we have these periods of cold temperatures, in our policy, it's when we have sub-zero temperatures for more than a single day. So, if it's more than a single day, we're in sub-zero, then we look to communicate out that we have some warming, charging locations, and that's really how it's written in there. So, I think that working with those who are currently serving our homeless community, we would have a staff member that would be at 121 Mill Street, and primarily is what we're looking for is for Sunday. Is there space on Sunday when those other needs are not being provided that we could bring staff in, open that up with a volunteer base? The mayor mentioned that to me this morning before I had the conversation with Mr. Holmes, having a strong volunteer base to make that available so that in those hours, there's 12 hours, there's that, they're closing down at 8:00 AM, they're not opening the overnight until 8:00 PM. So, is there an opportunity for us to be able to provide that? I believe that there is at 121 Mill Street in the community room. I think that could be a good opportunity to be able to provide that. If the council is directing an emergency, an emergency response from the city manager, we have locations. It means that I'm either canceling youth programming at Hasty Pettingill Park, I'm canceling senior programming, I've canceled, those are the things that would require me to do for multiple days to make something available throughout the day in the next few days because of this cold snap that we're having. I can certainly move in that direction. We can easily do that. Question is, is that the intent? Or is the intent to try to identify a location that will be on a regular basis, something that we could, when the temperatures get to the areas that we have and the operating policy that requires it, then we could go ahead and stand that up? We'd have staff that would be available, resources that would be available, and make that a good use of that facility on Sundays.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Well, I believe 121 will be ready very, very soon, so I think the Saturday, Sunday would be taken care of at that point, if we can get the volunteers. And I know that some of us can get them volunteers if need be. The other thing is, if your thing is seeing sub-zero, that needs to be changed because sub-zero, people are going to say, it's not zero out, so that guy, if he froze to death out there, because it was five degrees above, is not sub-zero, so it's okay. That needs to be, you know, below freezing temperature, that's what it needs to be.
So, just to clarify, that the current, the current policy is sub-zero with the wind chill factor. And my understanding of the current motion is not that the city manager is immediately going to open up additional facilities, it's for the city manager to identify additional opportunities when emergencies present themselves.
But, in the next couple, I mean, we need, he needs to have the latitude to be able to, excuse me. If we get these cold temperatures around zero or in the twenties that people are going to, with the wind chill, they'll need a place to go to. So, he may have to open up. I don't know what's happening right now at Ingersoll Turf. I don't know if they're still using that or if that's on mothballs right now. I don't know if the senior center is got at, I mean, I know when we have senior meetings, but I don't know in between the senior meetings if there's times where it could be used. The only one that has those schedules is the city manager and the rec department.
So, on Saturday, when I saw that the temperatures were, you know, dipping the way that they were, and it was going to be for multiple days, communication started between the directors of those facilities, Norway Savings Bank facility, Ingersoll, Senior Center, Hasty, and the communications director, we started talking about schedules. What, because we rent these facilities out, so what's currently being rented and what's available? They provided me the list of what's available. We couldn't post the senior center today, it was being used all day today. There was a lot of challenges with different, even some small things that people had already rented the space for. So, that's why those two, those two locations were used. Yeah, the Ingersoll facility, like I said, if the desire of the council is to cancel programming, we can make something available. I don't know as if Ingersoll's the best location for what we're looking for. I think that's a challenge. I think the best location is 121 Mill Street. As soon as we get it open, we will make that available when we have the temperatures that are requiring it, and if the council's good with that, that's what, I'll continue exploring it, but that's what I think is our best move.
So, have you guys completed a lease agreement with the Pleasant Street drop-in yet?
I believe it's been drafted, but I don't believe it's been signed.
Other questions or comments from the council? Counsel Calhoun?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, in terms of 121, I want to make sure I'm clearly interpreting, I mean, do we have a sense, are we going to have to have fire marshal approval again? Are we talking three weeks? Are we talking four weeks? Are we giving, putting you into a difficult scenario where we wouldn't have other options?
Yeah. We are, we are at the local level now for providing the certification for occupancy. So, we will not be waiting on fire marshal any further. They've been able to sign off on everything that they needed to sign off with, and transferring that requirement to local level. So, we'll need the fire department to ensure that the alarms, the sprinkler system on the phase-one side is where it needs to be. The phase-two side, that we did not touch, is where there was a problem, because that was going to be phase-two. However, for the occupancy, that side needs to have the sprinkler system. It's there, but it needs to be modified. So, we do not have a timeline yet on when they'll complete that. We'll work with the contractor, we'll get that, to find out what that will, what that will require. And then the handrails, obviously, something we can, that'll be, if it's not done already, it probably will be done tomorrow, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Other questions or comments from the council? Council ready for the question? What will be by show of hands? All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in the affirmative, none in the negative, and two absent, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to reports. For the mayor's report, I wanted to congratulate Panalam. Lots of people know it is still, it's Pioneer Plastics, but Panalam recently received the Governor's Award for Business Excellence.
Governor's Award for Business Excellence. The city manager and the economic development director and I went up to Augusta to support them. They've done a lot of great work there. Kudos to them and also to Jay Brencheck in economic development for working on some programs with them such as Work Link and the Workplace English. It's had a very positive impact on their ability to move their business forward. I attended the Boys and Girls Club Christmas event. Those of you who know the right people might find a picture of me sitting on Santa's knee someplace, but Mr. Martelli swore that he wouldn't circulate the picture, but we'll see. But the Boys and Girls Club, really excellent program. You know, folks that participate there with kids, the gym was full, kids that, you know, would have had a nothing happening on Christmas Day. They do a great job supporting them. A number of people from the community, little elves that were dressed up, helping, and it was a really great event. And I want to thank the staff for putting on New Year's Auburn. Communication, community engagement that coordinates all this, did a great job. Kudos to the fire and police department for helping out and also for Public Works. And I want to recognize Public Works for rescuing our fireworks display. Is while the warm weather was great for the event, we found out that the ground wasn't frozen, and it was quite a challenge to get the fireworks up to West Pitch. But Public Works jumped right in and saved the day, and everything went off without a hitch. So we really appreciate it. Great turnout. I think everyone had a good time. Councillor Gary?
I wanted to talk about the fantastic event we had on New Year's Day at the senior center with the age-friendly and first Auburn, but I'm going to let our goods. Okay. We had well over 100 people. We served refreshments. They played, different ones were playing their games. It was, we had people that don't normally come to any of the senior groups there, and they were all impressed. And now we're going to have new members, I think, join because of it. I mean, the company was excellent. You couldn't have asked, I wouldn't have asked for a better day because it was nice. The food was excellent. And it's just, of any of the events I go to, the ones that are put on by our age-friendly group are the ones that come heck or high water on there. And then at noon time, we had the lunch before noon. We counted the ball down at noon time, and so that was our New Year's Eve, hoorah! And they were dancing in the aisles, no joke. And then when everything was said and done, it got converted into a bingo game. And the prizes were excellent. Also, we did a wicked, awesome 50-50, and three people made out considerably.
Thank you, Councillor Ayden.
Auburn Nordic Ski Association members are all doing snow dances.
Sure. Councillor Cowan?
I can help. If you need an additional, I'll be happy to join. Just a lot of discussion today and a lot of heartfelt support for the homeless issue. I want to particularly call out the Bernards for the long-term efforts that you continue to provide for that group. Related to that, the mayoral ad hoc committee on homelessness is meeting Thursday to continue refining our recommendations, which does include a lot of language about we need to work with the various groups that are out there and coordinate so that we're not trying to duplicate. So I appreciate you guys coming in and talking tonight, so.
What time is it Thursday?
Oh, sorry. It's at 6 o'clock here in room 204 on the second floor here.
Thank you. Councillor Walker?
Yeah, I just want to say to the city of Auburn, thank you for the potato giveaway. We're still giving away approximately 120 to 150 bags a week to people that come to the community center, the senior community center. And it's been an ongoing, I think, three years we've been at it now, and it really has helped a lot of people to have that there at their, you know, need when they want to. Because they can only come when we're open, which is, I would say, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 in the afternoon. That's the best time to come to get them if you're going to come. So thank you again to the city of Auburn and the program that allows us to do this.
Thank you, Councillor Platts.
Thank you. Brief update for the future school committee meeting on Wednesday for anybody who's interested at 6:00 p.m. I just want to thank the Bernards. I don't know you guys, but I want to thank you for being here. I think anytime somebody speaks passionately about the issue of the unhoused population in Auburn, it moves us, and I think it's important to keep the dialogue open. I would say at the school committee meeting, we'll be addressing two policies in regard to students who are unhoused. So the conversation is not just occurring at this level, it's happening at the school level as well where it's also an issue. And that's it for school. I did want to re-request some information as we approach the budget cycle. Months ago, six, seven months ago, I had asked to learn more about the way in which the engineering department assesses which roads require improvement. And as we prepare for, I guess more importantly, the CIP discussions, capital improvement, I felt a little uneducated last year as we went into that discussion. And I know it would be valuable for me and hopefully some other councillors if we could learn a little bit how that assessment tool works, as well as seeing where some of the roads are ranked in our system, just so when that CIP comes in front of us that we have a little more context to go off of.
Yeah, as an update on that, on a positive note, I noticed, I guess, maybe three weeks ago now, Mr. Manager, the contract was awarded for the road, the actual pavement assessment. So that's underway. And yeah, we can have a discussion during the budget process, get more understanding of the prioritization of their project.
Yeah. So that will be teed up as soon as the report's done. So what we'll do is we'll have them go through exactly, how did they assess that road? What's their process? What's their criteria? And then they will then rank every road within the city of Auburn. So that'll be the report that you receive. So we did that through the budget process, so I apologize if we missed communication on that, so.
Representative Abdullahi?
I heard there was a statue being built next to the Hope Building. I'm not sure what it would be, but I heard there was a rumor of it might be like, so look out for that.
Great, thank you. Representative Eggy?
Nothing tonight, but Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Just a couple items. We already mentioned about New Year's Eve. Yeah, about 3,000 people came out for that event, so a great turnout. We had three bands, seven vendors, food truck vendors, and we had a great turnout. So couldn't ask for better weather either. So just want to thank the Auburn Exchange Club as well as Toys for Tots. With their assistance, the PAL program was able to provide Christmas presents, stockings to 226 PAL kids, and then an additional 87 kids that are part of the YMCA youth program. Because we had the additional now, the team reached out, staff reached out to YMCA and was able to pick up the additional 87. And on top of that, they also received winter jackets and snow pants that became as a part of the Exchange Club's donation, as well as the Pine Cone Chapter provided that, as well as Twin City Financial Group also donated winter jackets and winter clothing. So a great, I'm sorry, and as well as the Masonic Lodge in Auburn. So good turnout there. Our Public Works team sponsored 10 families within that as well. The staff there provided that. They had a great day of wrapping presents and getting everything ready for the handout. So a really good response to the community for the holiday season for those students. So that's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the second open session of the evening. If any member of the public that'd like to address the council on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address.
My name is Paul Bernard. I'm from Turner. I just want to make a comment in regards to the police department, the Lewiston and the Auburn Police Department. Starting, you know, this past June 1st, a lot of the homeless, every day we'd go out, someone was assaulted. One was stabbed, one was this, one was kicked in the face, one had all his teeth knocked out. The violence just started increasing. And so we talked to them, and I had asked them, because a lot of them said they were starting to go to Bonny Park. They were transferring from Lewiston to Bonny Park. So I asked all of them, I said, why are you going to Bonny Park and not staying in Kennedy Park? And they said, it's safer in Auburn than in Lewiston. Really? I said, so why are you saying that? The police department in Auburn is more humane and more compassionate and more understanding, and they treat us like human beings. How many of the homeless said that? 100%. All of them. So I asked them, I said, why do you think the Auburn Police Department is more understanding and compassionate than the Lewiston Police Department? They said, we don't know why. We don't know why. I said, I know why. I'll tell you why. Because most of the police officers in Auburn were trained by an individual that had integrity. He was honest. He had strong moral principles and moral uprightness. And that was Police Chief Phil Crowell. And the fruits of his labor we're seeing today in the Auburn Police Department and the homeless community bragging about how humane the Auburn Police Department is. And to me, it just made my heart swell because I know Phil, we did veterans work together, and you people should be proud, all of us should be proud of the Auburn Police Department. And because the homeless population, they come in contact with the police in Lewiston, Auburn frequently. And for them to, 100% of them saying that this is what they think about Auburn, more humane, more compassionate, more understanding, they treat us like human beings. That's what they say. They treat us like human beings. Applaud the Auburn Police Department.
Thank you very much for that feedback. I know that the city manager and the police chief work really hard with the department to do the right thing and treat everybody with dignity and respect, and it's really valuable and appreciated feedback, so thank you for that. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address the council? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, the open session will be closed. There is no executive session tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved by Councillor Cowan, seconded by Councillor Platts. All those in favor? Opposed? The council will be adjourned.